So now being 6 o'clock, I will call the October 1st Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. First item on our agenda, I believe you're probably here, Highway, so we have Scott Ripley, the Highway Superintendent. I assume you want us to talk about speed limits, so I'm gonna let Scott maybe, unless you, anybody wants to open up, we'll just hop right into it.
I'm here for questions. We talked a little bit before, so does anybody have questions?
Yeah, it'd be nice to kind of have an overview first.
Tell us how we got here, that's the question.
This was a project by the Mass DOT that was started by my predecessor, over probably a year, at least a year ago, about two years ago. It's funded by the state where they're replacing all of, I think about 300 street signs in town, painting roads in town, all the line painting, and replacing, or I should say, putting in guardrails.
This isn't just our town though?
No, it's actually Rochester, Middleborough, and Plimpton. So this is where the first phase of it is to replace all the street signs. They're gonna be doing the guardrails in a couple weeks, and eventually they'll be line painting. I know everyone's here because of the speed limit changes, and that was because, since this is a state project, the Mass DOT has decided that these are what the road's speed limit should be. Other than that, I don't know if you have any, that's the basic overview of it, is what it is.
Were they doing resurfacing too?
Uh, no, no, they're not.
Just striping?
Just the painting, yep, they're just doing the painting. I wish they were doing resurfacing, that would be nice, but no, they're just gonna be doing the line painting. But they've been doing Route 58, which is Main Street, Main Street itself, Center Street, part of Parsonage, it's quite a bit that they're actually gonna be line painting coming up, so.
And guardrails too?
Sorry.
You mentioned the guardrails?
Yep, and the guardrails, anywhere if you've seen where they have the cement posts, the old cement posts in the ground. If you notice that they have the silt socks behind them, and those are gonna be replaced with guardrails. As far as what they are, whether they're rusted metal or the regular metal, I'm not sure, probably the regular metal, I think we discussed that. This is all done by, this isn't anything to do with the town, this was all done by state specs, and the state's paying for it. So, that's an overview of the project.
So on these other streets, do you expect the speed limits to change, like on Center Street?
I think they're done, I think this is it, I believe they just finished up. They were doing it for about three weeks, and if you notice the line where they went down, down Parsonage and Prospect, turn around, came back up, went down Main, came back up, down 58, and they replaced them, and I believe they're done. A lot of them were just, they did change the speed limit signs, newest stop signs, dangerous curve signs, things like that, which are all quite, it's a pricey job, so.
The only speed limit they raised that I'm aware of is on Main Street, is that correct?
Right, well, they did do, I guess 106, they changed from 40 to 45 during a stretch. I haven't looked at it to see what it was, a resident called me. But other than that, the main question is the Main Street one. Right in that one stretch for about a half a mile, not even, it's 45 in both directions.
And I guess the question is, what options do we have to get it reduced?
As we discussed before, you can do that, I contacted the Mass DOT, but what they want us to do is, you have to get an own independent study. You have to do a study on a speed thing that the town will pay for. Exactly, and they decide, and then what your study comes up with findings, if they find it could be lowered, then you submit it to the state, and then they still have to decide whether they want to do it or not, so.
What was that basis on raising at the beginning?
Uh, I would imagine, I'm not familiar exactly what they do, or how they do it, but it all goes on, straightness of the road, width of the road, number of houses, things like that.
Curves and hills.
Curves and things like that. This is not something they just did, this is probably, I said, this was started, I have the copy of the contract here from June of 2017 when it was first sent out to the towns, for the towns to sign off on. So I imagine, it was probably at least a year before that, they had engineers out, and they were checking it, and they probably did speed limit things and measuring, and I'm not exactly sure what they did.
So we signed off on it?
Uh, yeah, the town signed off on it, as if, you know, because-
You signed off on it?
Probably, probably the previous superintendent, because it was-
But they, so the previous superintendent was aware of the increase in the speed limit?
I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know, because if you, I showed you, I can show you the plans, it's not, it doesn't say, "Speed limit sign 45 miles an hour," it's all codes and numbers and circles and arrows, it's very confusing to read, and it's a 90-page thing that you have to go through and look at all the maps and everything like that.
And you said they engineered that in Boston DOT office?
Uh, we deal with Taunton.
Taunton District 5.
But I imagine it's all the same, but District 5 is what we usually deal with for things like that.
And they usually, they come out and they drive it?
I would imagine, yeah.
But they didn't try to come out of any of our driveways?
Well, I understand that too, sure.
Would it be possible for all of us individually to complain to that office?
You can try, absolutely, I've told people that I called to, they can call Station, District 5. They're really good, when this first came up, I emailed the contact for this particular project, and he went right on, and he contacted his supervisors, and that's how we got back with the information that you can do your own study and go from there. So I think I'd be open to hearing suggestions. The legality of it is that the state sets the speed limits for all the towns, and they set all the road limits, and it's all kind of a state guideline.
So, do we get a revenue from this because they raised it?
No, we don't have to pay for it because they changed all the street signs. I mean, this is probably $200-plus thousand worth of work they're doing for nothing.
My understanding when Jim Mulcahy was here, that it's about $250,000 of work that was gonna be done by the state.
Right.
For the three towns?
But, no.
For Plimpton.
For Plimpton, that's the guardrails, the painting, yeah.
So if they change it back, if it's determined that yes, it is a safety issue, the town has to pay for new signs?
Not, no, well-
I don't know.
They have to pay for the engineering and the time research.
Yeah, we'll have to pay for the engineering, I don't know if they would, that might be something we could, they might cover that, I wouldn't wanna say for sure, but if we found it was unsafe, they might do it.
Although it'd be easy enough just to take those-
Get the old signs, I assume.
I mean, right now, we're faster than Route 58. It makes no sense.
So there is, I'm new to this, and maybe everyone else is aware of this, but in Chapter 90, Section 17C seems to imply that there's a default speed limit of 30 miles an hour in densely-
Thickly settled areas, or business areas, yeah.
I don't know if anyone's done the analysis, but my understanding of thickly settled is average of less than 200 feet between houses.
Between houses.
Over a quarter of a mile, so that might be one other thing, to just take a look.
I don't think we have that though.
But I was gonna say, I mean, that's something that they probably already have examined.
They must have examined that.
Well, that's fine to a certain point.
But we've got a blind corner and a dip.
And you pull through it, and you look to your left, nobody's coming, then you pull out, and all of a sudden, there's a car right there, 'cause they're going 45 miles an hour.
There's an hour, yeah, you don't have time to pull out of your driveway.
So there's a safety issue here, too.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense, I mean, when you come from Route 80, from Kingston-
That hill at 45 is gonna slam into us.
To the gas station, it's 40 miles an hour all the way, and that's a better laid-out road.
Right.
Wider shoulders, so we need to go back. Did you have a chance to contact Charlie Seelig?
I have not, no, not yet, from OCPC.
I believe that they put an article on the Halifax Town Meeting to reduce the speed limit in town to 30 miles per hour, with the idea that they could then post signs to raise it where it needed to be, because obviously on 106 and 58, you can't have 30 miles an hour. But town, the town meeting turned it down, so we never found out whether it could even be done.
Oh.
Okay, but I think what's worth looking into, we'll contact Halifax Town Administrator, Charlie Seelig, to find, he must have done the research on it, and find out if it's viable. I'm not sure that it is, but at least we can look into it.
Yeah, absolutely, and there might be something with the project at Crescent that we could do too, that would help us reduce the speed limit further down the road on Main Street.
And where the corner where they go up.
Mm-hmm, and Ring, I'm sorry, Ring, Ring, Ring in Main. There might be something that we can do there that would help reduce the speed further down the road, so, you know, there might be definitely, I don't know what we're gonna be able to do with 106, I don't think we'll be able to do much with that, and 58 will be tough because it's a state road, but-
We can't do anything with 106 or 58, those are, once they're state routes, they do it.
They govern them, right.
Yeah, but Main Street should be, we should at least give it our best effort to-
Absolutely, see what we could do, it'd be nice if we could reduce the speed.
Another thing that you might consider too, because the road is actually settling very rapidly now, is coming off 106 to Main Street, no large trucks, stop it right there, because what's happening is, that road along the bar is straightaway, it's what they call a cordory road.
You're talking now down-
On Main Street.
Yeah, just past us.
That was in, I don't know where we are on that, Scott, but I know of Jim Mulcahy's plans, that was to be rebuilt, that road.
Yes, it is, that's all.
Right.
And the reason why it's been put on, it's been put on hold because of the main, the curve project.
Okay, so it's all tied together.
It was to kind of combine them together, but that road, from my understanding, has to be raised 14 or 16 inches, and it has to be dug down, and it's-
Is this less, you know-
Yeah, it's-
Okay, driving a fire truck down that road, we shut it down to 30 miles an hour, even though we gotta go on a call.
Sure.
Because you have over $800,000 worth of equipment on this truck going at 30 miles an hour, and she's listing because of the road.
Oh, absolutely, it's a-
So you have to be out in the middle of the road, and it's dangerous, I'll be honest right now, it's gonna get worse before it gets better. Because those, a cordory road, if y'all don't know what it is, it's made of logs, cedar logs under the ground, that were laid in back in the late 1800s, and then they filled dirt over it, and they went and paved it over it over the years. And when I was digging the ditch out there with Chet Rogers years ago, we hit the rocks. There, you can, with that coal it is, you can see the logs underneath there. Of course, my brother's standing on this rock, which he thought was a rock, and the rock started moving, and it wasn't a rock. But I mean, so that road's gonna settle and settle, unless they actually come along and dig the whole thing up down below.
But at the same time, if you improve the road too much, people are gonna go even faster.
Right.
Right, so, they've come by my house and taken those reflectors down with a 3/4-inch rebar, all of a sudden they wake up and they get back on the road. It's like a safety, that, oh gosh, we're not gonna run into it, we're gonna kill ourselves. Well, that's what I've done to help, I mean, it sounds crazy, but when you're half asleep coming around a corner, and you hit something, you're gonna wake up and get back on the road.
The rebar would, yeah.
And rebar has woken a lot of people up.
I bet it has.
I've replaced them over the year, probably six times.
Can we restrict trucks from Main Street, or no? I mean, just when you're sitting there on a day-
They use it as a cut through, what they do, they use it as a cut through, some of the time.
A lot of people use it, yeah.
I doubt we're gonna be able to restrict trucks from Main Street.
Maybe we can divide this out.
But if it slows down, I mean, it knows so by.
We can, we can look at it, I mean.
There's something to look at.
Yeah, why don't we focus on maybe the speed first?
Right.
And then get in touch with Coleman Page, and make sure we legally can do this, and then look at about doing that, and then maybe as an aside, if there's a way to-
Because it's gonna cost the town more money if you let big trucks through to repair it again and again.
But if we can't restrict it, then, but maybe we could even restrict the size of the trucks.
The weight limit.
Weight limit.
As one basic element of it is.
So why don't we bring this back?
Yeah.
Do you think two weeks gives us enough time?
I got the supervisor on the job that was doing the work, gave me the Taunton name and numbers.
Oh, good, Eric Foreman, is that the number?
Yeah, the Foreman, and for traffic operations, and there's a girl there you can talk to if you need.
Yeah, well, I think we're gonna work through Scott.
Scott?
Yes.
All right, so are you gonna notify us if we need to also contact and say this is not a-
I would say you should go ahead and do that anyways.
Or should we go ahead and do it anyway?
Yeah, go ahead and do it anyway, yeah.
Oh, contact, oh, definitely contact, I would, just let them know, that way they know what the town wants.
If you write letters, copy us.
Okay.
Would that be the, this number right here, is that what you?
That's the person that, the guy on the road told me.
That's who we have to call?
Yep.
Is this for District 5?
Yes, District 5 headquarters. Oh, he's actually good.
So what are the steps, we know you guys are gonna write letters, you're gonna contact Charlie?
And see about the blanket speed limit way of doing it, which I've seen other towns do that, but it was more like in the lieu of a speed limit sign. I think Hingham, Hingham had it, I believe, is Hinghamqua has it, and it said, unless otherwise posted, it's 35 miles an hour.
Right.
And that's, just covers everybody, that way if the sign gets knocked down or something, then you know it's gonna be 35 miles an hour. I imagine it's the same idea, same thing, you just have a blanket speed limit. I don't know the procedures for doing that, probably same thing, have to go through DOT and see what it is, vote on it.
Start with Charlie, and then we'll start contacting all the departments.
Right.
But that's definitely worth exploring.
Absolutely.
Sure.
And that would solve a lot of issues, and get past sort of spot zoning of the speed limit.
Right.
Which we don't wanna get into either, if we can avoid it.
Sure, absolutely.
As a resident, you cannot change Route 58, Palmer, any part of that?
You, technically, the speed limits are set by the state, I know it's our town, but the state sets, it's all set on Mass General laws, and they set, they decide what, we all deal with Mass General laws, I mean, everybody in the town hall has rules and regulations set by the state that they have to follow, and accounting procedures, and I mean, we just finished up paving Parsonage Road today and Prospect Street, and that was all done through state specs, and you have to go through, so it's the same as speed limit signs, and they set the standards. However, I believe, just talking to them, they will allow you to have a say in it if you need to, which is what we're gonna look into, so you can say, "This is unsafe, we feel it's unsafe," and try to show it to them, they'll let you do it, but that's why you can't just change signs. These, like I said, these folks just didn't come in and just, "Hi, today we're gonna change it to 45." There was a lot of, there's a whole, I have the whole contract right here, it was a company called Stanex.
But they didn't go out of any of our driveways.
No, 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 absolutely, no, that's, that's why they allow you to be able to look at it, and you can get together and do this, and say, "We feel it's not safe." I do find it very odd that that one particular stretch is 45. Just out of the blue, it's 45 from 40, and then-
But there's so many breakdowns, where, you know?
On my way here, I went up and down the street and calculated it out, and it, the arrangement of speeds is crazy. From 106 up to 58, it goes from 40 to 30 at the curve, 45 at the straightaway, 30 back up beyond your house to the stop sign. Then from 58 down, it goes from 40 miles an hour to start, 30 miles an hour at the curve, again near your house, 45 miles an hour starting at the straightaway at Margaret's house, to 30 miles at the curve.
At Ring.
Then to 40 miles, and then to 25 at the stop sign, just before the stop sign.
And what's that?
And the stretch from the straightaway, the 45 thing, is less than a half a mile. It just didn't pass the silly test.
I'm guessing they do that because of there's a curve in the road, or you're coming up on an intersection, and that's why they, and that's all, and it's all this is-
Do you think people are gonna slow down?
No, they don't, no. I can tell you too, that there was also, this company is putting up the street signs, there's two people from Mass DOT making sure they're doing it by code, so it's being, it's being watched, so I mean, it's not like, again, it's just-
It's not arbitrary.
They're looking at their maps, they're looking at their maps, they're saying, "Oh, there's a-"
They don't feel they made a mistake, yeah.
So, it's all-
Code is one thing, but safety's another. If you notice on those curves, there's a bunch of new telephone poles, and the new telephone poles are for a reason, somebody hit them.
Sure.
Somebody snapped 'em, 'cause they're going too fast.
Well, I find that a funny little story is that the police department had a speed limit machine, a sign, to check the speed limit, and it got hit by a car.
It got beaten, yeah.
So, they got a new one, yeah, they got a new one, and that one just got hit by a car. So now they're waiting to get another one, because if people-
What is that telling?
That's crazy.
Now, the first one's more business for us in the fire department and rescue, but that's not a good way to look at it.
No, not a good way, no.
One of the things we can do is, there is Mass dot procedures for speed zoning on state highways and municipal roads. If you wanna give your email to Bree, we'll send it out to you.
Okay.
You, you could even do-
If you can't sleep, this'll happen.
Put a link on the website.
I can put a link to this.
Yeah, just put a link on the website.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Because I have a copy here, and it's very dry, at least, but it shows you how the procedures, they go through mapping, and, you know.
Because the reason I ask is, I live on 58, you know?
Yep.
And my corner is a death trap.
Well, you're a resident, you can, you can send them a letter.
Yeah, you sure can.
Yeah, send them a letter.
Hey, Scott, on the independent study that Mass DOT references in this, do they say who has to do it? I just wonder if Old Colony Planning Council could do a traffic study for us?
I suppose, just says you have to have an independent study.
Okay.
It's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Because we could probably get that done for free, or for pretty cheap money.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll look into that.
It just said that you have to have an independent study that is at, maybe a lot of your cost, so it's nothing.
Okay, okay, all right, so I can look into that.
Great.
All right, perfect.
Just one quick question, just a sidebar, is that corner project that we're gonna be reviewing at some point?
Yes, yeah, we probably should do it as part of this, because we gotta solve that.
Yeah, that's kind of why I'm asking.
Yeah, part of its money, we gotta make sure where all the money's coming from.
What one?
Yeah, but yes, we need to, you know, that was the reason Jim Mulcahy didn't do that section in terms of paving, et cetera, until it was figured out.
I mean, we didn't want the curve taken out because it just speeds people up even more.
But it is dangerous there.
It is dangerous.
Both the police and the fire.
Because people go faster than, and now they've encouraged them to go even faster. So if you could get people to slow down to 25 to make that bend, there wouldn't be any issues.
I mean, I don't-
Well, there's, there's still an issue with the, with the triangle there.
The dentit traffic pattern.
Because it should be, people shouldn't be able to go left on the left side of it, it should be on the other side, and we've got to start.
But if it was approached, something similar to like what was done on Upland.
Yeah, exactly.
You'd solve nine tenths of that.
Yep, right, yeah.
And then I don't, I don't know, you know, I don't handle signage in it, but if you could even put a stop sign to get people to stop.
I don't think we can, but, again, we'll take a look at the-
But, yeah, or yield or something, but the, Upland is a perfect example, I mean, that, the flow of traffic just solves the problem.
Probably ran over the signs, which they have.
Yeah.
There's a lot more traffic right on there though, with all the school traffic.
Oh, it's terrible.
It's amazing in the morning.
And for pickup.
And for pickup, 2 o'clock, 2:20.
But, yeah, so I guess, what, more to come? Do you wanna try to shoot for two weeks?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
And then if not, well, yeah, let's try to shoot and put it on-
We're meeting the 15th?
No, well, is the 15th two weeks? Yeah, it is, so the 15th.
Okay.
All right, so we'll try to have some answers for the 15th. Okay, very good, very good. Yeah, so you wanna do same thing at 6 o'clock, so these guys can come in early?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so more to come.
Excellent.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Write those letters.
So you'll stick with me with everything?
Yes, thank you, Scott, very much for coming in.
We're in for it. Hopefully we can find you some answers.
And we'll keep in touch with you with what we find out as well, so we're all working together.
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect.
I'll try to contact the town from Halifax and just see about-
Perfect.
If you learn something from him of significance, maybe letting us know even ahead of time, ahead of the meeting, so.
Oh, sure.
I can try to find out what town, remember what town, I said, it was either Hingham or-
If you find out what town it is, we can reach out to their town administrator and find out how they handled it, okay?
Because I think it's, you know, smaller towns, it's nice to have a blanket speed limit, because if the roads aren't straight.
Right, most of them aren't.
You should have a-
Something consistent.
Sure, absolutely.
Where if it's not posted, you know what it is. Great, okay, thanks, Scott.
Thank you very much.
35.
Any questions?
Oh, yeah, at least.
So you think this is spring?
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, so we're, we're on to the next.
Moving on.
Thank you very much.
The Moon and Back Cafe, we never got the license signed.
Well, I didn't, don't think we had a complete application.
I don't have any, thank you.
Okay.
But this has been going on, Bree's been calling him every day for a week.
Okay.
When they came in for a business certificate, I requested, I gave them an application, and I'm called.
Good night, good night, thanks for coming in.
Thanks, Mike.
So who has jurisdiction on this, is it just us?
I think it's us.
We'll select them.
So one of us needs to go in and let them know they need to get-
Yeah, I'll go over and talk to them.
Okay.
Have a sandwich while you're there, I hear it's very good.
Yes, that's what my husband said too, "It's delicious."
Okay.
I don't know how to-
You know what, maybe you could even take the application with you.
Yeah, give me whatever they need to fill out, and I'll take it with me.
Yeah, take it with you.
Another one?
Yeah, another one.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, perfect.
But that's good, because two weeks from now is the 15th, and certainly that gives them enough time to get it done.
Exactly.
Yes, the first application was given to them, let's see, I've been dealing with her, when she did her certificate, August 20th.
Okay, we'll get it done.
Okay, Fire Department update, I don't know that there's an update, Liz isn't here, and she's negotiating a contract, but it sounds good?
Good.
Yeah.
And we don't have any bids that we're opening, nothing like that, it'll all be done when she gets back?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Good. Marijuana moratorium. I don't know where we are on that right now. Are we?
Well, I just asked Tara for clarification because I was a little confused by an email and she said that the state has extended the, um, their time period to review and provide a decision on our bylaw to change or to extend it to 12:03 of this year. So we should have a decision on our article for, um, to extend the moratorium for another year by early December.
I'm surprised that that's not just a, you know, gimme.
Well, I guess she seems to think that they're waiting for more things to be clarified by the state.
Oh, okay.
So that, um, rather than doing this prematurely.
Okay.
So to extend that for a year to, um, December of 2019, all right? A year beyond now.
Well, wasn't our article to extend it through June 30th of 2019?
So at least getting past.
Yes, town meeting, the next town meeting. Yeah.
So our request has to be to them by 12:03?
No, no, they'll be back to us by 12:03.
Oh, they'll be back to us.
They'll be back to us, yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, thank you.
I would just throw out, if we get to the place that we are, um, asking Planning Board to make another recommendation, I, we certainly have some zoning decisions to make there. I would throw out there that I'd leave open the possibility of a ban on retail sale.
I would.
Sure, but we, we have to have a ballot question then.
Yeah, no, but I just, I want to leave that on the table.
Oh, sure.
I'm not sure it's a good idea or a bad idea.
Yeah.
I'd love to know, and nobody seems to know at this point, but what kind of revenue there might be, but in general, I would kind of be in favor of letting other towns deal with the problems.
Yeah. They capped it at 3%, I believe, so it's, uh.
The revenue at 3%?
So you get, I think, 2.5% automatically. I think that's the state, but you can then add up to 3% and they capped it so towns wouldn't put 20% or 40% in.
Or 3% of gross sales?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Add up to some money.
I don't know how much it's going to be. I mean, when you, some of the installations that they've shown on TV, I mean, they're really laid out. They have cases and you walk in and people, I just can't imagine in Plimpton putting that much money into something like that because there probably wouldn't be that much volume.
Agreed.
Well, you never know. And is it, is it worth the money?
That's the letter from, the proposed letter from.
This is on the budget.
From FinCom and Selectmen.
Oh, terrific. Okay.
Appreciate that. That's great.
Fantastic.
Yeah. Okay. And we understand, uh, Mr. Hart is?
We haven't opened it.
Yeah. So if anybody would like to be on the Finance Committee?
Absolutely.
Please.
Come hang with the cool kids.
Yeah.
Exactly. The coolest.
Chairman Nate Seid would love to talk to you.
Great, thanks, Nate. So should we send a memo to Planning Board? Because regardless, they need to get moving on this. I mean, even if the moratorium, if they don't uphold our moratorium, then it's already expired.
So what are we asking the Planning Committee to do?
To come up, they're going to need an article for town meeting, the annual town meeting, on zoning, what we're going to do with marijuana.
Okay. And they should be the ones to?
Yes, they're the ones that need to do it.
Okay.
And it's, there's going to be channels they have to.
On zoning or a ban.
Or a ban.
So just leaving that all on the table and we're going to have to, we'll have to have a public hearing and a general discussion.
Sure, sure.
But, yeah, I think that we should direct them to.
Okay.
Start the process.
Who's reaching out to?
Well, um, I don't know if we just want to send them a memo asking them to, um, to request that they start preparing an article, um, for town meeting to address marijuana zoning in the town of Plimpton.
Or just, just be aware that there will be need for an article by, for town meeting.
Okay.
Why don't we let Liz deal with the mechanics of that when she's back?
Okay, perfect.
She knows the stuff.
She sure does.
Okay, I will give that to Liz.
Okay.
Okay, um. I've got a couple of things before we jump into the goals. Uh, I mentioned the master plan survey. I'm a little disappointed in the way you can do it, but, uh, at least there's something out there we might want to revisit when Liz is back, whether it makes sense to actually revamp it a little.
Mm-hmm.
The old townhouse door. Really, it's ugly.
Could we go back to that?
Sure.
I wonder, should we have our meeting on the fifteenth, kind of hear what's coming up and then potentially make another survey out of what comes up with that information?
So they're doing it on the thirteenth, right?
No.
No, what's it there?
It's at our meeting, the fifteenth.
Which is fifteen.
Two weeks from tonight.
Which is our next meeting.
Our, whatever we're calling it.
Right.
Open house.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what, what do you want to do?
Oh, well, I'm just proposing it'd be interesting to hear what comes up in that, what issues, what degree, there's any consensus on anything and then using that information to potentially make another, uh, another survey.
Yeah, I got a feeling, though, it's going to run from 4:30 to 6:30, right?
Yeah.
They're probably not going to have a lot of time to turn it around, right? Unless you just want to hear.
Yeah.
Feedback.
Yeah, I just want feedback.
Hmm. Might as well.
Yeah.
They'll be here anyways, whoever's doing this.
Yep.
Are they setting up in the other room?
I'm not sure.
We probably should, since we're going to do traffic in here.
Yeah.
What's in here?
We're going to talk about traffic again in two weeks with these folks.
Oh, at 6:30, though.
Well, we just said six.
Six o'clock.
But maybe we need to push it back to 6:30.
Yeah, I'd like to have the two hours with the master planning.
Okay.
And then do our business meeting.
Okay.
If that's all right.
Yeah, that's fine with me. So we'll have to just let them know that it's going to be 6:30 and not six, that we're going to talk about the traffic. Or the, the speeds, speed limits.
Will our meeting start at 6:30 then? Since you're having O'Callaghan from 4:30 to 6:30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. O'Callaghan does not need to be filmed, 4:30 to 6:30?
That's correct.
No, no.
So will you let Area 58 know that?
I sure will.
I thought so. Thank you.
The old townhouse door. We mentioned that, uh, at times it's been, it's been unlocked or open, literally the door open. I did go down and the door can be closed if you slam it and it will not open. Because I, and there is a button on, when you look at, when you open the door, there's a button right there and if you push the button, it locks. You close the door and it's locked because I did it a couple of times.
I had the bee gentleman there today.
Yeah, I don't know why he couldn't close the door. Even if he couldn't lock it, he should have figured out, just slam the door and it's.
He, he's a pretty big guy and he said every time, and he'd walk around and he'd push it and it was opening. So I don't know about the button. But I didn't go there, but.
Something doesn't ring true because I went down and did it about three or four times. So we sent a message off, uh, you sent a message off to Jessica and the other members. I did see a memo back saying that she was addressing it. I sent a message you might have seen just saying, you know, let's make sure we, that the persons who are doing the class are responsible for making sure it's locked when they leave. I think it's okay.
Just been several times even Steve has found it to actually be open. Like, open, open. Looking into the building open, not just unlocked.
I don't understand that. That's just negligence because it does close. There's no, there's no issue of it not locking or closing.
And the bee issue has been solved.
Great, good news.
Library bylaws. Uh, this is more something I'm looking for. We can't find them. Do you, anybody, would you have had the bylaws in your past life as selectmen?
Uh-uh. Not for the library.
Library?
Never seen them.
Okay, okay. Council on Aging is looking, too, and they don't have theirs either, so it seems like the bylaws went the way of.
Well, wouldn't Topla have the library bylaws?
Contacted Nancy and she doesn't have them. She says they were at the library.
And you can't locate them at the library?
No. Debbie says she can't find them.
Okay.
So I'm just asking.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have for kind of minor things. Uh, goals, economic development, I think, nothing going on right now. Financial management, we have the letter from Nate. This will go out to all departments, uh, that there's little change. You want to?
Actually, I, I guess we have his signed version.
Yeah.
Maybe you want to sign it?
So this is just stating that, uh, we're going to handle the budget process a little different in that, um, it will now be sent out by the town administrator and all such budget requests and submissions will be made directly back to her. So we'll have the town administrator pull together the town overview and then, uh, go back to Finance Committee. And obviously on the bigger departments like police, uh, those cap, uh, department heads will be with them.
Mm-hmm.
One, one thing I'd like to propose.
I'm sorry, is this budget change request will go to Liz and then to you?
Yeah, I'll give you a copy of that.
Okay, great.
I think we've talked in the past and I, I've certainly heard many other towns do it, that maybe in November or latest, early December, that FinCom, Board of Selectmen, the finance people in town meet and just have a general discussion of where we think we're headed, what goals are, um, you know, what the targets are, rather than getting to March and then get into it then. And I, when Liz gets back, I'd propose that maybe we aim for sometime in November, even just for a half hour, a joint meeting on our expectations and, and, you know, what the goal's going to be on level funding or 2.5% or whatever.
I think the prior to that, when Liz is back, that her and Barbara should pull together the process, explain it. I'd like to see, I think some of the documents need to be updated. You know, we've been using that same submission format at least 30, 40 years.
Yeah.
When I was first on the Finance Committee, yeah. I had black hair they were using, so.
Did you need to vote on this to sign this?
No.
No.
I don't see why.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a real good idea to pull everybody together.
You know, just, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Public safety?
Um, let's see, what's up? Uh, uh, they meet Wednesday night, or the Public Safety Committee meets Wednesday night. Couple of odds and ends going on, but as far as I know, nothing great, nothing major.
Okay. Grants. Not sure anything's going on right now till Liz is back.
Yeah, maybe Liz can reach out to Elise when she gets back and see if she's got anything that she's working on.
Right.
And give us a report.
Voluntheerism. I thought I'd start contacting different people about who should be on the committee, not asking them, but just, who would you, so I asked Tara, for instance, to start thinking about, and, you know, over the next couple of weeks, month, we'll pull something together.
Good.
Maybe asking who should lead the committee, too, just in case someone felt inspired by your question.
They all, I shouldn't say all, but they start with, not me.
I think underneath it all, they're really saying, yes, me.
Yeah, pick me, pick me.
Yeah, we're just having to cut through the resistance.
I'm going to go out and just survey people who I think are town leaders and see if I can get a list of names of people that we might approach as far as, you know, people who know the town and would be willing to serve on a volunteer committee. Then we can start addressing the, the ways we go out and reward people and acknowledge people.
And the way we recruit people.
Yeah, exactly. Technology, I don't know of anything, uh, I think until Liz back, things are status quo. Any other things before we dive into correspondence? Correspondence?
Okay, um, so this one's hot off the presses. Apparently we have a vacancy in the FinCom. I guess we've talked about that, that Eric Hart is resigning because he's moving out of town. A new appointment can go from current date through May 18th, 2019, the next election. We got the K and P bill, which was distributed today. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to take a look at it and if no prob, um, concerns, I'll, actually, I'll sign the warrant now.
Yep.
This is the warrant for the state elections and we each need to sign that.
Okay.
And I wonder, well, I'll make a motion that we all sign the warrant.
I'll make a second, first second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll pass that down.
Thank you.
And this one is a memo from Joint Marble COA, um, noting that the COA is grateful to request that Nancy Butler be put on the Council on Aging Board. She's anxious to join at their next meeting, which is October 15th, and so I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Nancy Butler to the Council on Aging through June 30th of 2019.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And with your permission, since for a long time, there has not been a COA representative on the Community Preservation Committee, I'll explore with Nancy if she might be interested in joining. Her husband's aboard already and I'm sure would love to have Nancy as part of that. So that'd be really cool if that happens. Okay, this is a, um, a document announcing early voting times for the November 6th election. Early voting times are Monday, October 22nd, 9 to 2 and 5 to 7, Tuesday through Thursday, October 23rd through 25th, 9 to 2. Also Monday, um, October 29th, 9 to 2 and 5 to 7, and Tuesday through Thursday, October 30th through November, November 1st, 9 to 2.
Wow.
Presumably, or if it isn't, Bree, could you check and see if this is on the town website?
I believe she is putting it there, yes, and it's going to be in the paper.
Great.
That's great. Lot of opportunities for early voting. That's terrific.
Before we go on, back to the Council on Aging.
Oh, thank you, there's another note on there.
Yeah. Uh, I'm a little confused. It says Halifax Council on Aging has taken back their Meals on Wheels deliveries on Mondays, Thursdays and Fridays due to a delay in their renovations. We will continue to do ours and theirs on Tuesdays and Wednesdays. I don't understand why we would be doing any of Halifax's.
I think she means working out of this building.
Well, again, I don't understand why they need to be here at all. I mean, I'm not against Halifax, but they have a building that's certainly, Council on Aging here, our kitchen is, you know, a myth. It's not even Council on Aging Kitchen, really.
Mm-hmm.
I think our Meals on Wheels might be just on those two days, that's why, so they do.
Right.
So I'm not following any, I don't know.
Okay, so.
I can find out for you.
Yeah, would you?
Sure.
If we're doing Halifax's Meals on Wheels any, yeah, I'd like to know why.
Okay.
And if they're working out of here, why they're doing that. Sorry.
Uh, this is, uh, an obituary from, published in the Patriot Ledger, September 22nd, about the passing of John Rotuccio, uh, who's a longtime Planning Board member, longtime citizen of town, and our condolences to the family. This says, apparently there was a service September 29th, which, which has passed.
Could I take a look at that after?
Yeah, so on a, on a pragmatic level, we now have an opening, uh, on Planning Board as well, and so between FinCom and Planning Board, two of the most important boards in town, if anyone has any inkling or urge whatsoever, it's a great way to get involved.
Thank you.
And that might be another one to get on the website is, you know, positions open, important positions in red letters.
Yeah.
Plimpton Halifax Express from last Friday, apparently we chose a new, uh, fire chief.
Mm-hmm.
And apparently, uh, we passed, we had a special town meeting and approved, uh, a new preserve. Um, I would call attention to a letter from David and Evelyn Dunbar about, uh, the duties or responsibilities or services of, um, citizens in town. It's a little bit buried in the middle. It is well worth reading. Um, it relates to, uh, Tuberk's Preserve, but it's more about what we owe the town, not only, we as citizens, not only what the town owes us as citizens. It's really beautifully written and highly recommended. And with pleasure, I can report that that completes correspondence.
Can I see the paper?
Yeah.
Thank you. There was a neat thing in here about the cemetery tour.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I saw that and I thought, oh, my gosh, that is so cool.
Yeah, there you go.
So that's the Plimpton Historic Society presents on Saturday, October 20th. It is a Hillcrest Cemetery Tour and Fall Potluck, and that just sounds really neat.
There is a, at the Potluck Supper after, they're going to be approving the new bylaws. So it'd be great if people could turn out. You know, for $15, it's a great organization.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but it started for, is that what it said? I think it started at 4:00.
Four, I think so, for the cemetery.
Yeah, for the cemetery tour. But we've got some beautiful old headstones out there, and really, they're works of art, a lot of them.
The fellow who's doing this is the, I can get his, it doesn't say here, but we actually did this-
Stephen O'Neill.
Stephen O'Neill. He's the Assistant Director, I think, of Plymouth Museum, downtown Plymouth. And he did this about a year, year and a half ago, and it was, he really knows. There's a great story he tells about an old-time citizen of Plimpton that became not only known here and throughout New England, but almost across the country. And his way of carving gravestones, it just spread and spread and spread. So it's an interesting story. It's worth coming to hear and see, and he goes through it.
Very good.
Okay, dates to remember. See, we have our open meeting at 6:00. So we'll meet October, well, we're going to have the 4:00 open space on October 15th, followed by our regular selectmen's meeting.
You mean?
4:30.
The OCPC?
Yeah. 4:30 to 6:30.
Open house.
Open house.
Right.
Right, master planning.
Okay, the master plan opportunity for citizen input. Okay.
So should we start at 6:00, and we could do highway, and then by 6:30 have them come in and do feedback?
Or my suggestion, if the workshop's going to be from 4:30 to 6:30, that we wait and have our open meeting at 6:30?
Preferably, okay. 6:30 then.
Okay.
Will we be, if the workshop will be in this room, correct? Where do you want this workshop?
It would be difficult for us to start if they're going to be trying to clean up. Maybe it'd be better if they used the other room.
Okay, just checking.
And then we can start right away at 6:30.
Okay.
So we do want to get the word out to citizens that this master planning is, that we are interested in input on our long-range plan to fix this.
It's been in the paper.
It's been in the paper, but I don't hope it's in this last one.
It's also been on Plimpton, helping Plimpton.
Oh, it has.
Yeah, I think Tara has forwarded it.
Because we want to redo Center City. We want enough Center City, Plimpton.
Right.
We want a plan, and we want input.
Yeah, and how it would best meet the needs of our residents, long-term. There's nothing in here this week, but-
So we'll get it in the paper again.
Perfect.
This is on what date?
October 15th. Yep.
Monday, 4:30, 6:30, open house, people come in anytime they want.
Come and go, right.
And you'll all be there?
Yes.
During part of it.
And the rest of the town hall folks, or just?
Whoever wants to come.
To get input, to solicit input from residents. We're doing a master plan for the townhouse campus.
The campus.
And to try to determine what they want us to include in it, whether affordable housing somewhere in here, or walking trails, or, you know.
Basketball.
Yeah, ball fields, recreation, right.
So you've got a lot of plan.
We've got about 29 to 30 acres, all told.
Really, and it's put together, it is to put together kind of a comprehensive plan, not that we'll do it all at once, but that as we do pieces of it, it is toward the ultimate goal, with the ultimate goal in mind, so we don't do something and then have to tear it apart and do something else.
A good example of that is the parking lots. You know, we know we've got a problem, but until we have a plan of how this is going to evolve, we don't want to start messing with those. Yet we know that's probably going to come, I guess.
Okay, so the Old Colony Planning Council, we just went over. The townhouse will be closed on October 8th in observance of Columbus Day. And I guess that's it for dates, right?
Mm-hmm.
Minutes? Minutes, I read the minutes?
Yeah, I read the minutes too.
I didn't see. So what did I do in the minutes? You want minutes?
I didn't see any corrections when I read it. Well, I only, I got the two from Bree today. Which other ones are we doing?
We have the open meeting of 9:24, 9:26, that's last week, and the executive sessions from the same dates.
Did we approve those?
No, because they're from last week.
Oh, from last week.
For the two meetings last week.
Did I send you a note saying fine?
You did.
Okay, then I'm fine with it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes, the regular session minutes from 9:24 and 9:26, as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we accept the executive session minutes from 9:24 and 9:26, as written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, didn't we have the minutes from town meeting too, Bree?
That's the 9:20.
That's the 9:20.
That's the 9:24?
No, actually, Bree sent those today.
Okay, so we'll have to hold those then. Those were just little minutes about when we met before town meeting.
Right.
To discuss the bonding.
Yeah, yeah, it's really a one-sentence thing about bond. And Bree sent that today.
Okay.
I get it.
Okay, so I just wasn't sure of the language. So can you make sure that that is correct with one-year taxable, no-principle bond? I wasn't sure. Because I just kind of did bullets of what you said, and we weren't sure what to include.
Let's do that in two weeks.
Okay.
I don't like, the language could be better.
Right, okay. Perfect.
I'm stumbling over what that should be.
Okay, do you want to work with Bree and?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I just, I wasn't.
Yeah, my notes were just bullets.
It's bullets.
Yeah. And then we talked about two, and, yeah, so perfect, okay.
Then we had September 10th. The minutes.
Yeah, and I was okay with that.
Did you have a chance to look?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, I'm okay with the two.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes of 9:10, it's written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you second it all, right?
Yes, I did.
I can fix that language now. Let's will get that done.
Okay.
I would, I'd like to amend these minutes to read, Mark Russo made a motion to approve a one-year taxable state bond.
Okay, State House bond?
Yes.
Okay. That's where that came in.
I was like, you have the State House written here.
As recommended by the open space committee.
Perfect, all right, so I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes of September 20th, as amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. So we are current, current, current. Woo-hoo!
That's great.
That is a good thing.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, rants and raves. Anybody want to go first?
I'll go first.
Sure.
My rave is Chief Benjamino's leadership through the process of the securing a new fire chief for the town of Plimpton. And his guidance throughout this very difficult process has really brought us, I think, for me anyway, leaps and bounds further and faster than I thought we could. We've accomplished things that I'd never thought were possible, and it's just been wonderful, and the people in the department, the men and women we have, have done a great job embracing his leadership and ideas, and they really have run with it. So I just am so thankful for Chief Benjamino leading us through a very difficult time, which has now culminated with us choosing a fire chief, and hopefully we can secure a contract with Steve Silva, and he can begin, you know, moving further with, you know, continuing the progress that we've made with the department. So that's mine.
So three raves, I guess. Number one, with continuing dysfunction, modeling questionable behavior on a national level, having local government that can get things done and done well, and sort of feeds off what you just said. Just thankful for that opportunity. And then two other raves, the Republican Senator from Arizona, Jeff Flake, in a rave, for the Democratic Senator from Minnesota, Amy Klobuchar. Both of them showing some behavior, something about citizenship that we all can emulate.
My rave, I think, is for the way Plimpton turns out when there's an issue, such as tonight, such as we've seen in the past with the, well, the highway, the corner of Ring Road and Main Street. I think both the fire chiefs, fire chiefs during their time, and police chief have said that's the most dangerous corner in Plimpton. So we're resolving it. But the great thing is that people come out and they talk to you, and they tell you their views, and we're lucky to have that. Nice being a small town.
Yeah, and the way they all came out for the Two Brooks, you know? When people feel strongly about something, that they rally and they come out, and it is great.
My unofficial, when I looked out, was it was 194 and 3 against.
That's amazing.
I want to recount.
You counted four?
You, we'll have to compare notes. I don't know who that was, I know who the three are. All right. Unless there's any further business?
I have a rave, I think you guys are doing a very great job.
Well, thank you.
Things are moving along, and I think we've got a lot accomplished.
I do think we've accomplished a lot.
Really.
Thank you.
We're going to applaud Liz, you're a great little group here.
It's a team, you know, it's teamwork and-
So I'll make a motion that we adjourn for the evening.
No second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so see you in two weeks.